Good evening and thank you for coming. What a, what a great crowd. It is my honor, my privilege to call a meeting to order, so to speak. The Hunsfield Boy Scouts, if you guys are ready, we'll post the colors. You will please stand. Audience attention. Color guard your backs. Salute. Scouts, we salute. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, the prayers to the Texas flag.
On the Texas flag, the pledge of allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one individual.
Color guard, post the color. Color guard, hop. Color guard, of thy faith. Color guard to these, audience to these.
Thank you. May the peace.
At this time, I'd like to introduce the good friend, the nice good friend of yours, Champ Miller, and he will lead us in the indication.
This prayer was, was started and conducted on the 3rd of July, 1974, and as you know, every congressional session begins with a prayer. And the one that wrote this one was Reverend Edward G. Latch in Congress on that day. And he starts off with a verse from Psalms. Blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord. Psalm 33, verse 12. Let us pray. Eternal God, stir thou my minds and stimulate our hearts with a high sense of patriotism as we approach the 4th of July. May all that this day symbolizes renew our faith in freedom, our devotion to democracy, and redouble our efforts to keep a government of the people, by the people, and for the people truly alive in our world. Grant that made me highly resolved on this great day to dedicate ourselves anew to the task of ushering in an error when goodwill shall live in the hearts of free people. Justice shall provide the light to guide their feet, and peace shall be the goal of humankind, to the glory of thy holy name and the good of our nation and of all mankind. Amen.
Amen. I do have the distinct honor, believe me, it's an honor, to introduce our speaker tonight. I'm gonna read some things, and I'm probably gonna comment on some of them intermittently. Kevin Bray considered it to be an honor to represent the 8th District of Texas in Washington. Walker County considered it an honor to have him represent us. Do y'all agree? As leader in Congress, Kevin is a senior member of the House Ways and Means Committee, chairman of the Trade Subcommittee, and vice chairman, and top Republican on the Joint Economic Committee. As Deputy Whip, and I can't tell you what that means, but maybe give us a plan in a few minutes. For the Grand Old Party and a board member of the Conservative Republican Party Committee, Study Committee, he is actively involved in the new conservative House majority efforts to protect the unborn, end bad legislation, and regulation, and cut federal spending and debt. And we all need that, I mean, to the nth degree right now, we need it more than ever. We don't get it, we won't survive. His honors are immense, but some of his favors, being named Hero of the Taxpayers, we're all one of those, a defender of liberty, and we hold that close and dear to our heart, a small business champion, some of us are one of those, and a friend of the seniors, and I'm one of those. He certainly appreciates his efforts in that area. Above all, Kevin never moved to Washington. This is, this is something that, I don't know, has anyone else that does this, but he commits to his job, spends a lot of time in the area, and going to Washington, so he and his wife, Kevin, can raise their boys in Montgomery County, just south of here. So he is a true, true Texan, in every sense of the word, and he's more of a Texan than he is a Washington DC guy, I would take. Give us a round of applause for the honorable Kevin.
First, Judge, thank you not just for introducing me tonight, kicking off this town hall, but thanks for your leadership of Walker County. You've been a great partner to work with on a lot of issues. You keep us busy, which is what we want to have happen. And again, thank you for all that you do. Champ Miller, thank you for your service to our country, also in helping select our young men and women to serve in our military academies of West Point, to Air Force, Navy, Coast Guard, and the Merchant Marines. And I wanna thank, I wanna thank our scout troop, Boy Scout troop 98 who's here today. My belief is any meeting that starts with scouts putting up the flags is gonna be a good meeting. And I don't you think that I love to see our scouts here? Chuck Fields is, is heading the troop. Thank you as a dad. My son's a scout, and I'm always there to be able to take him through all the campouts and through all the meetings and all, and I always appreciate the dads who take the time to do it, so thank you. And join me with thanking our three scouts, Matthew Fields, Cameron Uplands, Shawn Gibson. Good job, guys. Well, normally, as you know, we do more than 50 town hall meetings a year, and we do that to make sure that one, I can update you on what's going on up there, but more importantly, so you can tell me what's on your mind, and so I can hold myself accountable to you because you're who I work for, and I never forget that. And the reason we do these town hall meetings is to make sure you can talk directly to me about what's on your mind. We normally don't do town hall meetings the week the 4th is live, but last week, so much happened in Washington. And this end of the year, we're facing, as a nation, one of the biggest train wrecks I've ever seen in my lifetime. We need to talk about it now and take action now to avoid it. So if your permission, let's go through these slides. Sarah, is there a way, or Judge, is there a way to dim these lights toward the front just so the folks in the back can see the, the slides a little better? We're gonna run through four, perfect, perfect, even better. We're gonna run through four key issues. The economy, which is doing better in Texas, but struggling across a lot of the country. The spending crisis that our nation faces, Judge Pierce talked about it a bit, that in the year, we're facing this unprecedented tax cliff that will affect every one of you in this room, every one of your pocketbooks in a major way. There are automatic spending cuts to the fence that occur unless Congress takes action. And there's a number of issues, unemployment benefits, payroll tax holiday, the way we reimburse our local physicians, our doctors, to see our seniors, our Medicare, a debt ceiling vote likely, all at the end of the year. Then, of course, because of the ruling last week, the Supreme Court, let's talk about the future of Obamacare. Let's start with the economy. Again, we're doing better in Texas, but you look at the country's economy, and it is really struggling. This last job for Ford, 69,000 jobs, that's all. That's all we had created across this whole country. It's the fewest number of jobs in a year. Job growth has slowed by two-thirds. We've got business consumer confidence down, and earlier this afternoon, we learned the manufacturing orders and the manufacturing index in America is, is now at the lowest in three years. So we're gonna see fewer jobs in manufacturing and fewer growth in economy going forward. So here we are, four and a half years after the recession officially ended. We have the 40th straight month, month of unemployment above 8 percent. That is a record since World War II. Fewest number of workers in the workforce in 30 years, and if you, the only reason unemployment rate's gone down is people giving up looking for work. Millions have given up looking for work, and in fact, if we really countered them the way we should, our unemployment rate really is above 11 percent. It is in a bad situation, a long time after the recession has. The economic projection for the rest of the year has been cut significantly to 1.9 percent. That is, that's barely above stall speed for our economy. We really need, gosh, at this point, we should be cranking along 3.5, 4 percent, we're twice overdoing, right? And the Obama recovery, you look at the 10 recessions since the end of World War II, of those 10 recoveries out of the tough times, this recovery ranks dead last. 10th of 10 in recovery. Next slide. Here is, we were told, and I oppose, and still do, I think it was exactly the wrong answer to the economy at the time, plus we added almost a trillion dollars to our debt, and we were promised if we spent all that money, that unemployment rate today would be 5.8 percent. It's at over 8 percent, as I told you, it's really, really maturing. Look at, well, the most recent, the Reagan recession, that he and the area as well, and had the first part of his presidency in, was even steeper than this one, they had higher unemployment. At this point, he bounced back dramatically. His economic growth was over 10 percent. This is, gosh, barely 4 percent, and so we've got, just look at the difference between how this recession and recoveries occurred, where it was all government spending to try to get us out of the recession, versus the Reagan recovery, where it was all along Main Street. Let's get Main Street going. Let's get small businesses investing in higher interest. Look what happened. Huge difference between the two as far as job creation. In spending, you've seen this chart before, and it's updated, but you wouldn't know it because it looks just as bad as it did last time we showed it to you. In the red is our spending future as America, if we continue on the path we are, if we adopt the President's budget or anything like it. You can tell right now, we're just starting an explosion on debt going forward, and as you can tell, the green area, that's our revenue, it'll bounce back after the recovery. If we ever get this recovery fully going, get people back to work, we'll get more revenue, but you can tell from the chart, the revenue never matches what the spending is. And you can't tax your way back to this balanced budget. You could double everyone's taxes in America, we'd still run a deficit today. We could, we could take every dime the wealthy makes supposedly, it wouldn't cover a couple months of what federal government spending is. You cannot tax your way back to balanced budgets. We've gotta get spending under control, and we've been fighting, as you know, the House, we put out a budget and passed it. The last two years, Republicans been in control, the Senate hasn't passed a budget in three years. President, to his credit, at least proposed a budget, it was rejected unanimously in the House and the Senate. So what we really need, I think, is a serious budget from the President, and we need a budget of any kind from the Senate if we're gonna get our financial house in work. The House, I counted up the other day, we have passed now almost $20 trillion of spending cuts out of the House, all of it sitting in the Senate today. All of those cuts are, so we've gotta get serious about this, and again, I, forgive me if I've already told you this, but Judge, I always put this in family terms because that's how most of us judge all these charts. What does it mean for us? What it means is a young child born today in the Huntsville Memorial, their share of federal debt is already $46,000. They own Uncle Sam a new Lexus. By the time you're 13, if you don't change your way, you'll own a second one. By the time you're 22, get out of Sam Houston, get ready to start your life, they'll owe a third one. And so, but in truth, young people don't buy luxury sedans, Uncle Sam, they pay the price a completely different way. They paid through higher taxes, higher interest rates, and fewer jobs. So the time when they get ready to start their life, we've heard me say this before, but it bears repeating, the time they're getting ready to start their life, there'll be fewer jobs for them to go after, and if they get one, they'll have fewer money in their pockets as well. So young people pay the price for all the spending going forward. Let's talk about the end of this year. I want, I'm giving plenty of time for us to be able to talk about issues and hear from you, but we are facing a tax cliff that I've never seen before. We have a number of key parts of our tax relief for you and me that have already expired, like the state local sales tax deduction. In Texas, that saves you and me over a billion dollars a year. We don't have to send Uncle Sam, but we keep in our pockets. That's already expired. Then here, all of the Republican tax relief, all the brackets, all the rates go away, alternative minimum tax springs back to life. That was supposed to be a tax on the wealthy, on 55 wealthy taxpayers. Now it will cover almost 24 million Americans. This is the Buffett rule that's already in place. The debt tax will spring back to life, the number one reason our family farms, our family owned businesses don't get passed down to the next generation, payroll tax holiday all expires, plus the child tax credit, which is important if you're raising kids, kids of marriage penalty, balances back to life, college tax credits, all that expires, and it is, next slide, real money. This is a study on the effects if, if those tax rates spring back to life in four, in our district, it's about $3,600 bill for every one of us in this room. And if you've got, if you're retired and you get dividends, part of your retirement, those taxes triple, which I don't understand. I know the President's called for allowing them to go, go to those higher rates, but for a lot of seniors, besides social security, that's their biggest source of income. Why would you tax those investments? And we know from the past, if you tax dividends, companies give you less, fewer. So none of this makes sense. All of this is gonna hurt families in our district and across the country as well, and it's gonna hurt the economy as well. So we're, the Ways and Means Committee, here's our game plan. We know the President's basically, in my view, sort of checked out for the year, it's all campaigning from now on. We're gonna move a bill in July out of the Ways and Means Committee that I serve on, through the floor, that stops all these tax increases from occurring. And we're gonna send it to the Senate, and my guess is they're going to sit on it, like they have most things, or they'll play some political games with it. And then after the November 6th election, people get back to work, but you need to know, the House is gonna take a stand now before the election, so you know exactly where we stand on staffing these tax increases. Also, at the end of this year, is something a lot of people haven't been thinking about, but which is these automatic spending cuts. The last time we had a debt ceiling vote, we extracted about $2 trillion of spending cuts in return for increase in the debt ceiling. Some of those hit our military unnecessarily hard. Yes, defense wastes money. There's no question about it, and I've introduced a bill that cut out the wasteful spending in the way we buy things, our big weapon systems. We waste too much money in that area, but this goes far too deep in our military. And the result is, if these automatic spending cuts occur at the, at the beginning of this year, we will start to hollow out our military. We'll basically reduce our service, soldiers, sailors, marines, and airmen by 100,000. It would link to the smallest ground force since 1940. We'd have the smallest fleet of ships since 1915. We'll have the smallest active fighter force in the history of the Air Force if we allow this to go on. And in Texas, we're one of the largest military states. Not only proudly do we send an outsized number of our young men and women who volunteer to protect our country, but we have a lot of military installations as well. For us, it will mean the loss, you can tell, active duty, Department of Defense, private sector jobs, that our total Texas jobs lost will be about 125,000. We'll play an outside role in punishment and a hollowing out of defense. The House, and we can't allow this to happen, in my view. In fact, the mistake America always makes is that when we think we have won the world in a war, we let our guard down, and we shrink our, our military force, and then a new threat emerges, and then we scramble to try to get up to me. Why make that mistake again? Especially since the, the war on terrorism is very much a, a real thing every day, every hour. We're seeing it in cybersecurity attack, we're seeing it in terrorist attack, everything. And so we're fighting hard to avoid these cuts. Next chart, House is already at, we passed a bill that instead of cutting defense, we cut the exact same amount of money plus some, $242 billion, but we take it out of non-surgical program, waste, fraud, and abuse within the system. For example, we, we give checks, we send checks to people who are here illegally to help them raise their children. It's fraud within the IRS, seven and a half billion dollars of it. We give subsidies in Obamacare for people who make more than $90,000 a year. We ask them to pay it back. By the way, we get fought on every one of these because my belief is, look, if you go to the bank and, and you overpay at the bank, you want all of it back. Well, if someone gets a subsidy they're not eligible for as taxpayers, you, you should ask for all of it back. That's what we're doing. So we've replaced these defense cuts that we think are savings that ought to be cut anyway because we're wasting money. The House also, our Budget Committee has always, already passed a bill that I sponsor that forces the President to show where these cuts can occur because so far, he's really, my avoided decision, pretend it doesn't exist, but I guarantee you this, in October, you and I are gonna pick up the paper, and we're gonna read about layoffs on many of our defense businesses in Texas and around the country as a result of these cuts, getting ready for that. And you're gonna see a military that's already gone, many of them, three, four, five deployments have really had a tough decade overseas. They're gonna be more discouraged by what they're seeing, what their country's doing, what their budget, and so we're acting now. We want the President to act now, and my guess is he will. Let's talk about Obamacare. This is, you've seen the healthcare chart that Joint Economic Committee did. You may remember, I asked my economist, after they passed that bill that they didn't read, we, I asked my economist to spend four months going through every provision in that law, and I said, put it on an organization chart so the rest of America can see how our new healthcare law works. This is the result of it, and just so you know, we can only fit 1/3 of bureaucracy on one chart, there's actually twice as much of that in law, but this is updated because of the Supreme Court decision. And as you can tell, a lot of that law, I, I was, I was more than disappointed in that rule. The Supreme Court got it wrong, and their reasoning was wrong, and they left in place a healthcare bill that will drive up healthcare costs. It's going to drive people out of the healthcare plan they like, including many of our seniors on Medicare Advantage. It's going to add dramatically to our deficit. And at the end of the day, it's gonna cost America about 800,000 jobs, according to the Congressional Budget Law. It's a wrong solution on healthcare. But Supreme Court ruled that it was constitutional, and they ruled it was constitutional because it is a tax that enforces it. This makes no sense. Under their reasoning, if you do something, Scoutmaster, we can tax you, and if you don't do something, Washington can tax you. So they got you coming and going, and they've now created, I think, Judge, a roadmap to bigger government. Washington can do whatever it wants, compels you to do whatever they want you to do as long as we enforce with the taxes. And that's too much power for Washington to have, by any stretch of imagination, way too much power. And what they didn't talk about was by calling it a tax, they've left in place 21 taxes in Obamacare, over a half trillion dollars of, of heavier burden, and about a dozen of those taxes hit the middle class in a big way, including families that have the highest healthcare costs, won't be able to deduct it from their, from their taxes, people who have health savings account won't be able to buy overaccounted medicines with it. If you work for a police department, a fire, one of, a larger company, and you have a better-than-average plan, you're gonna pay a higher tax for it, on and on and on, it's gonna hit middle class in a major way. Plus, leaves in place, if you look at the chart, the only thing different, right here, which I have a pointer, do I have?
No, I'm sorry. I have, you use my arm.
Let's see, let's see back there. Okay, now if I was just taller, this thing would work perfectly. Right over here is the unconstitutional mandate right there that they labeled a tax, that's insane. This area right here that's got question marks, that's the new Medicaid, that's the Medicaid ruling that said states don't have to be coerced into the new Medicaid plan, that they won't be forced to, to abandon the whole plan if they don't go along with sort of the, the mandate that the courts or the Obamacare put in place. Now, little wide, wide-eyed area up there, that's the class act that we forced, basically, the White House to abandon because it's, it's a new entitlement, no one can ever pay for. But what you'll notice is, in between doctors and in between patients, one corner to the other, still in place, 159 new federal bureaucracies in between you and your doctor. We all wanted healthcare reform, we need, we need more affordable healthcare, but this is not the solution most Americans, I don't care what part you are, is looking for. So, in my view, the Supreme Court has made very clear the future of Obamacare lies in the ballot box November 6th. So if we want it overturned, that's the way to handle it. At the end of the day, that's probably, that, that, I was hoping the court would see it the right way, they didn't, it just returns it to our responsibility as citizens, and we have a right to exercise that. We've already moved House Republicans, we've already passed 30 bills to repeal or defund all of Obamacare. We'll do it again July 11th, we want the voters to have no question about where we stand. We think it ought to be repealed in its entirety and replaced, not with a government program, not with a 2,800-page bill, not with more government interference, but we actually think patients ought to have more choice of plans. You gotta be able to buy from the best plans around the country. We ought to force all those costs from those general medical lawsuits out of the system. We ought to give you a, you ought to have the choice of a worker backpack where you can pick a plan that's right for you and your family and take it with you from job to job, state to state, home to raise your family, maybe you're starting a small business, you keep your plan and you're able to move with it, take it with you, and it is yours tailored to you, not what the government wants, what's important for your family. I think that's the ultimate solution. So you won't see Republicans repeating the mistakes of, of the Democrat Congress that passed this bill, we're just not going to do that. Final conclusion, in November, you'll make the decisions, in fact, we ought to, we ought to put a third question there. At the end of the day, you're gonna decide, is the problem facing America, the government spends too much, or is the problem that takes too little of your income? You're gonna decide how large a government do you want and how much you will pay for it, because at the end of the day, it always comes back to you, always does. And the one we probably ought to ask is, do you want? And the one we probably ought to ask is, do you want President's healthcare law to be the law of the land, or you do want better choice for healthcare? Because at the end of the day, that's what we're going to face. So, let's do this, let's flip on the lights, let's take some questions or comments about this or any other issues you guys want to talk about. Yes, sir. Earl.
That chart that you have, your chart?
Yes, sir.
Did you put that back up there?
Yeah, I was, yes.
That box that you pointed to, says Medicaid?
Yeah.
In the bill, that the Supreme Court reviewed, did it say tax?
In the bill?
In the bill.
No.
The Supreme Court reviewed, did it say tax?
They called, no.
Where, in the Constitution of the United States, does there, you know, one ounce of authority for a judge to rewrite any law? And when are you going to do something about it?
I tell you what, I am, I'm going to do my best to elect a President who will give us constitutional judges who don't make up the laws or write them themselves.
What I'm talking about is, you people in Congress have authority over these people that run off the reservation as judges.
Well, yeah. The Constitution gives Supreme Court, you know, third co-equal branch of government, we recognize that. I just think there, I think the ruling was dead long, and I'm terribly disappointed in Justice Roberts' decisions in that. In fact, what was frustrating was that Justice Candy, the one I was most worried about, he got a write, he got a write through the whole thing.
Well, that's what we were praying for.
Yes, sir. Here you go, here's my quote.
I had some suggestions for how to, I got my own suggestions there, one of them is tort reform.
Yes, sir.
There's too many lawsuits, too many lawsuits. Also, we have here what we call loser pays, where if you lose your lawsuit, you've got to pay for both sides. Also, let's pool small businesses together so they can get a, like Walmart, and also reform HSA and MSA, and also, you've got a car, you've got to pay insurance, but when you first get a car, you've got to, they have assigned risk. So, people who otherwise can't get insurance, healthcare insurance, they, when they get in, there's a pool, everybody who offers healthcare insurance, and they take one of those companies, like United Healthcare, or Aetna, or one of those, out, and that person can get it through there. And also immigration reform, we have twenty illegal aliens. Ashley Houston.
But you know, they're not going to be, they're not going to be attacked with the healthcare.
Yeah, that's a problem. We need those illegal aliens, we went back to Mexico or wherever they came from. And also, the college and medical school costs and mandates, just too much, too much. And also, and some reform in Medicaid and Medicare.
Yeah. Look, Robert, you laid out in that healthcare area, most of the Republican plan we tried to offer during that whole debate, which, by the way, allowing small businesses to join together, they have same purchasing power as the big companies, allowing you to buy across state lines, taking medical junk lawsuits out of it. It was the only plan that actually reduced the cost of healthcare payments by ten percent. Now, that doesn't change the world, but that's a start in the right direction to lower healthcare costs, and we need to go that direction. There is Medicaid and Medicare, a tremendous amount of fraud in both those programs in a major way. And now, finally, after years of us complaining, Medicare is finally getting some scrutiny. And every week, you open the paper, you read about more fraud, you're phoning doctors, seeing phoned patients, ambulances taking people to daycare-type facilities, billions of dollars being wasted in Medicare, we can't afford any of that.
Yeah, also, they could use some, like, raised assignment for Medicare. Because I live in a place where a lot of people are Medicaid and Medicare, and I even had trouble finding doctors there because the assignment is so low.
Well, in one of the, yeah. It is going to get tougher and tougher to find doctors to see seniors with the way, both because the President's laws and because the way they're reimbursed, which is a perfect example of government-run healthcare. Today, our local doctors, we want to see seniors, if there's any group that needs to see a doctor they know and a doctor knows them are seniors. They didn't, but if your doctors can afford to see seniors on Medicare because the way they're reimbursed. And the way they're reimbursed is basically the President's plan in place today. They don't reimburse doctors by the cost of the procedure or where they live, salaries have gone on, the rent's gone up, all that. They just have a budget wash, and once they get past the budget, they say, okay, that's enough, and they start cutting reimbursements for doctors. It's rationing, they don't call it that, they just don't reimburse, they don't ration the healthcare to you, they just don't reimburse people to provide it. So, it's the same result either way.
Imagine Canada.
It is.
We're just celebrating this weekend, Canada is, because they just had the anniversary of the British Going to America Act.
Thank you, Robert, appreciate it. Yes, sir.
I understand they're going to dump several million more into the Medicare program with this Obamacare. And these doctors, I mean, the first year I read, there was over a hundred Texans already doctors dealing with Medicare. And I know nationwide, there's people rattling the birds and dropping out of, we're going to find ourselves without Medicare, unless they put us in that god awful Obamacare with a wristband. But forty, almost fifty percent of those people are not paying taxes, how do you think they're going to pay for healthcare? And there's people sitting right in the middle of there, and they're going to say, what the heck should I work for? I think I'll just get me a part-time job and get free healthcare. You know, this, you need to start doing something in Washington to protect these doctors.
At the end of the year, if Congress doesn't act, our local doctors will face a thirty percent cut to see our seniors in Medicare. We've already got, early on, three-hundred Texans doctors that we can't afford anymore. It continues to grow, though, and a lot of them I've noticed are simply giving up their practice. They've just decided they can't do anymore, or they go to work for the hospital, or they go into big corporate, to corporate medicine as a result. So, we are losing the very, I don't want to say infrastructure, the doctors, nurses we need the most, women need them the most, fewer and fewer can afford to see it anymore. And all that bureaucracy and all that cost, nothing was done to try to get more doctors and nurses to see our population. Nothing was done to actually help treat people. So, when they say, look, this is going to cover most Americans, it's a great deal, they forget to tell you, but there won't be doctors to see them, there just won't. And so, yeah, it is, I think, exactly the wrong course.
The only doctors they're going to have, one that's going to pay the bottom half of their class.
I'm calling out to go that direction, okay? Yes, sir, just in case my doctors want Diane.
I might not be too bright, you don't have sway wings.
Yes, ma'am.
You write the tax laws and things like that. All right, why don't you just not collect the tax for this? Say, we're just to stand up and say, we're not going to collect the tax, we don't have to put this tax to burden on the American people, it's going to change our, we're just not going to do it.
It's the law of the land. And if you believe in America as a nation of laws, then you are supposed to follow those laws. And as you know, at the time, we warned that all the taxes under this plan, that the IRS would have to hire sixteen and a half thousand more IRS agents to enforce all the laws in this plan. And in fact, they're already starting to hire thousands more to do it.
Go ahead and put it on us, there's no way that you cannot fund this.
We have to repeal it. We have to repeal it.
Okay, another thing, if you, like, let all these people go and not give them their jobs, maybe they can pay for it, you know, maybe that, all these people up there, they don't have their jobs, go ahead and take their jobs away and have them pay their.
Can you help me with the Senate on that one? I think we can do your direction. Just need a little help.
Hey, just give me a ride.
I know, yes, sir. Steve.
First of all, thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mark.
And putting this given, if you were one of the first to expose the healthcare system and opening this question, as you spoke earlier, there's probably over fifty bills that the House has already passed that's been obstructed by Harry Reid. And the problem we have in the nation that the nation's been told by media that you are the obstructionist, and when Harry Reid is the obstructionist. And that should, hopefully, that will be in the campaign, that that will be exposed, that you pass these bills to help the country and not be the obstructionist that they've played you out to be. And also, another question, is there any hope for a consumer tax for the nation to deal away with IRS so that it would be, we wouldn't be fairly at the tax?
Yeah. Let's talk about, let's take in that order. One, the way the Constitution says government should work is the President proposes bills, the House passes their idea, the Senate passes their idea, and then you work through the differences for a solution. That's the way the Constitution says it works. Right now, only one chamber, in my view, is doing its job. The House has passed, again, almost thirty jobs, what we think should be a better idea of healthcare, repealing Obamacare. We've passed more than thirty jobs bills to get the economy back on track. We've passed our twenty trillion spending cuts to try to address that issue. Now, I know the Senate disagrees, and they have their own idea, but Constitution, their responsibility is send us back their idea. And they've never yet done that on anything. And so, if the President complains about a do-nothing Congress, well, he's half right. It's the Senate half is that's dysfunctional. And so, if they would simply do their job, even if they completely disagree, send us their ideas so the Constitution can actually work the way it's supposed to. But right now, we're moving it, we're pushing it, we have our ideas, we think they're good ones, but even if you disagree, at least send something. And right now, this is just not occurring. As you know, we've had no, in my view, you may disagree, but on every key issue in front of us, we've had no presidential leadership to say, this is what we ought to do. And I'm going to sit down with you, Congress, until we reach a solution, just not. Second issue is, I still dream of the day where we replace this horrible tax code that punishes investment and hard work and savings with the national retail sales tax. So, it is fair and open. And that is what I want to see. Yes, sir. And thanks again for your leadership.
Yeah, I mean, just like today, I carry my son to the doctor, you know, I mean, you can tell now because we can afford real high, high-expense insurance, whatever, that the doctors at the clinic are depending so much on Medicaid money and all this and all that, that there's, it's, between all these people who have gone between the doctors and the insurance companies and all this, they're not really caring, we're the ones who are suffering. Because even though we have a woman nine-thirty in the morning, it wasn't until eleven o'clock the doctor finally came in and saw us. We sat in the room for that long because, and you can hear him out in the hall, it's like they don't care about us, we're the ones who are suffering because we can't afford these high-priced insurances. And but, all this other stuff that's going on in between, they're having to wait for their money, so they're making up stuff.
Yeah, we do not have a system where people have real choices, you know, in healthcare. You pretty much get what you, your offer at work, you just take it if you get it offered at all. And a lot of small businesses today can't afford healthcare coverage for the workers. And I, my guess is, judge meeting with a lot of our companies in our eleven counties, if this law's allowed to stay in, I think a number of them will be forced to drop their healthcare plan for their workers and push them into exchanges. My guess, at the end of the day, you're going to see a lot of companies doing that, which means you and I will be subsidizing more and more healthcare, more and more people will be getting it from the government. And at the end of the day, we can never afford this. We can, in our wildest dreams, can never afford to pay for all this. So, at the end of the day, they're going to ultimately do rationing of healthcare, not by denying you treatment, they'll deny the reimbursement for a doctor or a hospital to give you that treatment. And it won't happen right away, I guarantee you, it will not happen right away. In fact, right now, we're seeing this, the healthcare law mandates a half a trillion dollars of cuts to our local hospitals, to our healthcare, to our hospice, to our nursing homes, to our, to those of you who have Medicare Advantage plans, significant cuts to you. But all those cuts are being delayed till after the election. Ninety-five percent of those cuts will occur after November of two thousand and twelve. So, what looks today, you're seeing all the sugar and all the sweeteners in this law today, but the real pain's going to come after we go. And my guess is, in Texas, we have a million seniors who choose a Medicare Advantage plan because it's the best, that's what's best for them. My guess is, two-thirds will either be forced out of that plan or will pay significantly higher costs to keep what they have today. But that pain of that law is not going to hit you till after November because it's hidden right now. So, that, can I ask you this, show of hands, how many of you want to see Obamacare repealed? Repealed. Okay, good, thanks. Yeah, nothing short, who wants it all repealed? And start with a fresh slate, right? Thank you.
I want Obamacare.
Well, you should have gotten Obamacare, they're one and the same. So, did you have a name up, sir, over there?
Hi, Toby Henry, I'm here.
Yes, sir.
First of all, I want to compliment Barbara, she does the most.
Well, thank you, you're a handsome man yourself.
And listening to what's been said today, I think there's one short way to get all this repealed, is to get that lying, sidestepping SOB out of office this November. Jimmy Carter has to be dancing, that he's been replaced as the worst President today in a couple of hundred years.
This is a government meeting, stop talking. I usually listen to the town hall, but I don't get to ask questions, and I have a
couple of ones that maybe you can answer quicker. I watch C-SPAN a lot, when there's a fifteen-minute vote, why do some people not vote until thirty minutes after it's expired? And the other thing is, tell me what's going on with the post office, they are advertising that they're not costing us any money. And yet, I read about billions of dollars being, I mean, they say they're not costing the taxpayers anything. And in these ads, which I don't know why they're spending money to pay for, and then, what? And then we hear about the billions that are being shovelled at them from Congress. And then there was an ad the other day by the post office about that they're forced to pay some number of billions of dollars back to the Congress for something I don't, they didn't explain.
Yeah.
So, if you can answer.
Yeah, both of, the first one, in a series of votes, the first one's a fifteen-minute vote, and that oftentimes goes longer because it's sort of the wake-up vote, you may be somewhere in Washington, you may be in the middle of an hearing, the middle of a speech, and so, they give you a little longer, fifteen minutes, to stop what you're doing and physically get back to the Capitol. So, that's why the first one is oftentimes longer than fifteen. After that, it's normally five or two-minute votes, and you've got a minute after that to get into the well and make that vote. So, that's how that works. On the second one, the postal service is in deep trouble financially, and there is no clear picture forward to make them solve it without some dramatic changes in the postal service.
Part of it is pensions, again.
Part of it is pensions, part of it is union contracts, there's a lot to it. The Senate has sort of kicked the can down the road. The Senate has sort of kicked the can down the road with the bill they passed out a month or so ago. The Senate, the House is supposed to take this up, I want to say in July, I believe, later this month. I will double-check on that. We have a different approach. We think you ought to solve the problem once and for all. Why don't, if you'll give me your email address before you leave, or anyone else here, let us give you sort of the principles of what we're trying to do in the House to save the postal service, but to make it, to make it balanced, sustainable, viable forever. So we just think kicking the can down the road, like Comstis on Too Much, is a mistake. Yes, sir.
I believe tax bills are to reconnect in the House, correct?
Yes, sir.
Now, where did Obamacare reconnect?
In the House. In the House. Although, what they did, in truth, was we sent a bill over to the Senate, not we, Nancy Pelosi, the House, Charlie Rangel chaired the Ways and Means Committee this time. They sent, I think, a housing bill to the Senate that had some tax provision in it. They stripped it clear and put their version of Obamacare in it and sent it back. If I recall, that was the process of technically it started in the House, but in truth, it didn't.
Well, I have seen some other comments about it. Reconnecting in the Senate, which would be a little bit of a portability.
Yeah.
One other thing, I'd just like to encourage other people to get familiar with the Fares Tax, farestax.org, Congressman Ray has indicated his support for our national resale, retail sales tax. And that gets rid of the IRS, and there's not a big, like, hope for them.
I still think, we are, we are, Ways and Means is hopeful we can get a partner in the White House, the Senate, who will do real tax reform. The way we tax people today is scaring the damn, we tax them for doing all the right things. Our business tax is not the highest in the world. You know, so the countries are just beating us around the head, using all of what we used to have, which is low rates and balanced regulation, and a workforce that was skilled. They're now taking a play from our page, a page from our playbook, beating the heck out of us. We've got to get competitive again as a country. We just have to. So the House Ways and Means Committee, in July, sir, when we pass those tax cuts to continue them, past the end of the year, there'll be principles of reform in that bill, and there'll be a timetable within the year for the Congress, and we open in President to do fundamental reform. So we're trying to force Congress to finally deal with tax reform. Yeah, we have a long overdue. Yes, sir.
Sure, you talked about the defense cuts.
Yeah.
And then you also said that some of the cuts are kind of in limbo until after the election. Could you specifically address what you're trying to do with Tri-Care?
Yeah, there's been recommendations to increase, first, to be specific, these cuts, automatic cuts on our national security, take place January first unless Congress acts to replace them with other cuts. And so far, the president has said he wants those cuts to occur. And so, at the end of the year, we're going to fight very hard to replace them so they don't happen. That's the first one. Second one is, there are proposals to raise the cost of Tri-Care, but those proposals are going nowhere in Congress, and I don't believe will be any part of the end of the year. That whole end-of-year mess. I would triple-check for you. If you'll give me your email, we'll triple-check that one, but I'm almost certain that's the case.
There was a new report the other day that said veterans under the age of sixty-five would be specifically targeted.
You know, my guess is, that would be the case. That's in the initial recommendations we got in the White House budget, that was the case. And I know armed services is looking at that. I just don't believe that's going to occur. And also tell you too, we fought, we have a lot of veterans in Walker County, a lot of veterans in our district. I fought pretty hard to get a veterans' healthcare clinic established in Conroe so our folks wouldn't have to travel down to the Bay area. And it has succeeded beautifully, but we've maxed out. And so, a couple of months ago, we fought for and got approval to triple the size of that veterans' healthcare clinic, offer a whole lot more services, so more and more of our veterans will be able to get their healthcare there. It's still Conroe, I know that's not here exactly, but it's a lot closer than the Bay area. And our thinking is, for all the sacrifice veterans made for our country, we ought to make healthcare more convenient for us. So that's what we're fighting to do right now. Is that right, Dave? Yes, sir.
Just a basic, one normal question. Do you believe in the idea of common good before that of the individual, and that should be a basis for making it all?
I don't.
Good. Because that's the opposite of what America is. It's right on the hit, there's twenty-five points, it's point twenty-four. But I'm finding Washington believes that...
Unfortunately, there is a lot of bad done on behalf of common good in Washington. And, look, if you have, if you have more responsibility, more opportunity, more freedom, the country will have more opportunity, more freedom, will be stronger, and there's no substitute for that. No government program that can make that happen. At the end of the day, if we strengthen you and your opportunity, the country's made. This is mine.
Maybe the right answer.
Explain how you justify signing Grover North's America's For Tax Reform Pledge, which is a sworn promise to step away from doing the business of government, no matter how pressing the taxes are.
You know, I respectfully disagree with that view of it. The tax pledge essentially says that you will not raise our income tax rates on America. And I, about the only, that's about the only pledge, other than my pledge to uphold the Constitution, I've taken. And it's my belief that we don't have a taxing problem in America, we have a spending problem in America. And I don't believe you ought to be burdened with higher taxes because government can't control its appetite. And I think, yeah, so, yeah, I feel very comfortable with that pledge. And I think government ought to tighten its belt before it asks you to tighten yours. Yes, ma'am. Why don't we take another, Judge, yeah, Linda, you want to do it? Judge, you have any questions you need to ask me, too?
I think one of Mike's larger concerns has to do with everything that's been going on for three years. And this community has been well aware of that. As an organization, we're the Tea Party. We brought numerous speakers in, we've had very, very good attendance at those meetings. We tried to, I think we've done five, get to know the candidates, types of events, the last ones were very, very poorly attended.
What was it?
I don't know. I don't know. We had three candidates here who were for state senate. We had Glenn Addison, Leela Pittenger, and David Duvers walked in the door that morning, unannounced, we didn't expect him. It was a really, really great conversation. The community did participate by submitting questions to our website, and it's all of it together, they said they were the best questions they ever had across the state. We did have almost all of the railroad commissioners here. We had candidates, both Republican and Democrat, come in for our school, our state school board. I'm concerned that in this primary in this county, we still had less than thirty percent of the people show up and vote. It's wonderful to see this group here. And I hope that everyone here makes a challenge to talk to ten other people about how important this is, about the information that you shared this evening. We cannot sit down on this one. We absolutely must, if it's embarrassing or it's awkward, to talk politics with your family. This is the year you need to do that. You need to step forward, be informed. There's so much on the internet, your site, your newsletters, there's so many things that come to us. And I'm just deathly afraid that people are going to sit out on this one. What do you think we can do as a community here in Huntsville to raise that awareness that we must vote this year?
Linda, one, thanks for the work you're doing. Thanks for raising an important issue because we still, I'm still amazed at how many Americans still don't exercise their right to vote. Some of them once said, America's the only country that will go around the country to defend freedom, but won't walk across the street to vote. Some ways, we are like that. I was hopeful. Because you look today, our town hall meeting tonight, I'll tell you, for many years, we almost quit doing it. Because we would travel all through our district, Judge, if there were, if there were twenty people there, we'd like to give each other high fives. You know, great turnout, all that. Today, it's so much dramatically better than that. I'm hopeful it translates into people going to the polls and voting. But as you know, and I always, when we go, we do a lot of work, we go in schools a lot to talk to young people. You know what I mean, about being involved, making a difference in their life, there's their constitutional responsibilities. One of them is to vote. And we make the point that in America, you know, those who are eighteen years older, if this was a country, a third of Americans don't even register to vote, so this whole third of the audience didn't even bother, can't even show up on the next day. On our best elections, best elections, fifty percent show up. So basically, in the best cases, this small group there makes the decision, my guess in this primary, ten percent show up. So maybe that final row there will make all the decisions for everyone else in Texas, you know, which is, when they talk about the power of the vote, it is the power because they all hold it, the people who show up. How do we get that across to people? I don't know, but I think it's one-on-one. I think it's getting your family out first, your neighbors. I'm always amazed, in my own neighborhood, I'll have friends, family, people I know who say, man, I got a lot of time, missed the vote. I said, we, we had two weeks. You know what I mean? We had all the early voting, you haven't been gone for two weeks. You know, and they, they just do it. So I think it's got to be done. Judge, what do you think? Person-to-person, family, neighborhoods, to get them out. Because right now, it's never been more important than that. Virginia, let's finish with you.
I would just like to add something, maybe a challenge to all of you. This country is not going to get better by talking. Ten years ago, I used to say, we can't be silent anymore. We have to get out there and talk about it. Well, buddy, we are way past talking. You had better get up off your duffs and sign up to work. Texas is a red state. It's going to be red. We are barking Obama out. That's not a question. There are battleground states all over this country that will have a razor-thin margin. Your presence could make a huge difference in this election. You will not do it by sitting at home and watching Fox News and saying, amen, brother. It's fun to do that, but it's not going to get it done. You need to go to the Republican Party office and say, where can I go to volunteer for Mitt Romney? You need to go join Republican Women and get busy. In two thousand and eight, I did something that was so outside my box, my wonderful husband created a monster in me. Fifty years ago, I could barely have told you I was Vice President. In two thousand and eight, I volunteered with McCain's Mavericks, and I went to Orlando, Florida, and I pounded the pavement for the week before the election. I knocked on whole strangers' doors in neighborhoods that were scary, and I carried an armful of McCain-Halton signs, and every, you would not believe how many people opened the door and said, well, I'd really like to have a sign, I'm scared of Obama, but I didn't know where to get one. And they put a sign in their yard because I brought it to them. We made phone calls. We wore beat-the-hell-out Obama shirts. And I'm telling you, if you want to win this country back, you have got to get an active role. You can't sit here in Huntsville, Texas, and say, poor Pinnacle me, what are we going to do? Get busy. We have one of the finest congressmen representing our district in this nation. He is an amazing leader, he is a fine Christian man and a man of character. The problem is not in this district. The problem is really not in Texas. They're borderline states that need your help, and I would encourage you to get with it. Thank you.
That's a good, very nice. Yeah. Thanks for being here today. Look, we have these things. If you want to give me feedback, want me to chase down some issues, want to be in our email newsletters, Virginia said we've got a lot of ways we can keep you all engaged and informed on all these issues, we'd love to have you involved, and as Virginia said, we have to. So thank you very much for being here tonight. Judge, thanks for having us.